Good afternoon, everyone. Calling to session Sac City Unified School District Board of Education meeting. I will start with a roll call vote for attendance.
Member Jean?
Here.
Member Kayata?
Here.
Member Benjamin?
Here.
Member Navarro?
Here.
Member Rhodes?
Member Singh?
Here.
Member Ibarra?
Here.
Perfect, thank you. All right, starting us off, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do. We have Nikki Malewski with 10 people yielding their time for a total of 15 minutes.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, good evening or good afternoon, members of the board. Board President Singh and Superintendent Allen and Nikki Malewski, President of the Sacramento City Teachers Association. This March, over one month ago, we began negotiations right about the time we faced layoffs of dozens of certificated and classified educators. We stood before you at that time and strongly advocated for deeper cuts amongst the administration, particularly at the CERNAS Center, to right-size the district's budget. From our perspective, when it was time to make those difficult decisions, the decision was punted. The cuts weren't deep enough, and as we'll return to in a minute, even those moderate cuts did not actually get implemented as promised. Also back in March, we let the board know that SUSD's unwillingness to make deeper cuts would be seen as a statement to the wider SUSD community that the district was on track financially, and SETA members and the students that we are fighting for could not later be asked to make sacrifices because the board was unwilling to make deeper administrative cuts that we had recommended. Well, here we are at the end of June, and that's exactly what's happening. We are close to an agreement. Now, the board has to get the ball over the goal line. How close are we? The proposals we are giving you tonight represents the informal proposals that we gave the district's team when we met late into the night on June 12th. While there are a few details to be worked out, the largest points of difference regarding the wage increases. For '25-'26, we are proposing a modest 2.5% across-the-board increase. The district is proposing a 1.5%. The difference is 1%. For '26-'27, our difference is whether an additional 2% salary increase is a one-time bonus or is an ongoing increase to the salary schedules. Over the two years of the proposed agreement, the cost difference between our proposal and the district's proposal is $2.7 million per year, or $5.4 million over the life of the contract. On a roughly $710 million budget, that is .38 of 1% of the district's overall budget. Now, when it comes to the district's '25-'26 budget, a budget that is on the agenda for you to vote on later tonight, there are a few other things that are worth pointing out. From '25-'26 through '27-'28, the district is projecting a decline in enrollment from 36,217 students in '25-'26 to 35,380 students in '27-'28. That's a drop of 837 students. And when it comes to adjusting the staffing in the district's budget, it reduces the numbers of certificated staff, teachers, by 124 FTEs over that same period, and you'll see that on page seven of the packet you've been given. And during that same period, it reduces classified staff by nearly four times that, 480 FTE. You'll see that on page eight of your packet. But what about administrators? How do the administrators fare under this new budget and this lower enrollment? If we look at the numbers, and you'll see this on page five and six, while certificated staffing is cut by 5.1%, while classified is cut by 24.6%, but administrators, their numbers remain unchanged for all three years of the budget: 314 in year one, 314 in year two, and 314 in year three. Now, let's go back to the discussion that was occurring this spring in response to the critique that we made related to the board's failure to cut administrators deep enough. On March 20th, the district staff gave a presentation called Staffing and Full-Time Equivalence. You may remember, we all were here. This PowerPoint is still on the district's website. In it, the district staff confirmed from the first interim budget in 2019-2020 to the second interim budget in '24-'25, the number of administrators increased from 265.9 FTE to 337.9 FTE. The district staff also provided a pie chart for '19-'20 administrators. That is page two, you'll see in your packet. The administrators that were assigned that year to the school sites was 137 FTE, while those assigned to departments and the CERNAS Center was less, was 128.8 FTE. But by '24-'25, which you'll see on page three, the administrators at the school sites, they were cut to 117.1 staff, presumably because of a decline in enrollment impacts the actual administrators that are out in the field actually working with children. But the ones at the district office went up an incredible amount to 220.7, an increase of 71.3% during that same period of time that we had an enrollment drop of 10%. In the district's March 20th-2020 presentation, it also included a slide which promised that after the 2024 reductions in force, the total number of administrators approved by the board will be 277.4, which you can see on page four of the packet. But as you can see from the current district's proposal, the district's net decrease in administrators never happened. The number of administrators in '25-'26 is a 314 that we had mentioned earlier, and you'll see in your packet on the page that has the administrators on it. And that's only a decrease of actually 36.6 FTE. That is much higher than what you approved in the spring. So during the three years of the 2025 to 2026 budget, the cost for those 36.6 FTE is about $9 million per year, using the annual salary and benefit costs of about $245,000, or approximately $27 million over three years of the budget. Additionally, in the second and third year, the cuts on administrators should be even greater to reflect the projected drop in enrollment. Over the past several years, we have worked together with the board and the district to make some advances that we believe we share an overall philosophy and outlook that's consistent with the budget's guiding principles that you also look at tonight. Prioritizing administrators at the CERNAS Center at the expense of serving students, which includes negotiating a fair contract with educators, is in direct conflict with the values expressed by every one of the board members here today and the district's own budget-guiding principles. It's time to get these negotiations wrapped up so that we can return to the beginning of the school year and ready to go. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
No more public comment.
All right, thank you so much. Any other public comment?
No more public comment.
All right, thank you so much.
Sorry.
Mine didn't say you.
Sir.
A lot of people wanted to add, and they wouldn't go over the 15 minutes.
Okay. My mistake.
Sorry. Two more, first speaker, Sean adjust.
Yeah, you know me, I don't yield my time, no, I'm kidding. So you guys have a principle, you've stated many times, about prioritizing school sites. And while a lot of the decisions in the last couple of years have been exactly that, right, what's happening right now in the proposed budget is not. Right, prior to COVID, 2019-2020, 51.5% of administrators were at school sites. Currently, in your proposal for next year, it's down to less than 35% administrative staff at school sites. That is outrageous in terms of the number of administrators and how much we're paying them that do not directly serve students, right? We should be prioritizing in our budget services to students. And, right, there's the saying, "I don't want to hear what you say, I want to see what you do," right? And again, you made a promise to the public to cut administrators to 277, which by the way is still way too much compared to the ratio of teacher staff to administrators at school sites versus CERNAS Center. But you didn't even do that, right? Your current budget says 314. So you essentially misled the public, and I'm being nice with that word, misled the public about what you were going to do in terms of budget priorities. You told them you were going to cut administrative staff to 277, but your budget says 314, right? And many people may not notice, but we noticed. We're trying to get a contract. The district negotiation team has been great, let me tell you, just night and day difference in terms of how it functions and how we get things done, but they're at the limit of their authority. So now it's up to you. So the question is, are your actions going to match your words? Thank you.
Scott Chase.
So Joe Biden once said, "Don't tell me what you value, show me your budget and don't tell me what you value." This district, five years ago, had, at the CERNAS Center, it had 128.8 administrators. And now, with 4,000 less students, you have 220.89 administrators. 24.6% of your SEIU is going to get laid off, 5.1 of SETA is getting laid off, but here at the CERNAS Center, if you're a member of the Club CERNAS, you're doing quite well. You said in March that you were going to go down to 277, but you're really going to go at 314 for the next three years. We serve primarily poor children in this district, poor children of color, and to take this portion of your budget and to spend it this way, it's incomprehensible. And this has been going on for a long time. We talked about this, you know, many of the board members that are up here, we talked about administrative bloat, and this is your moment in time to make a difference. It's your moment in time to basically be what you say you are. Thank you.
No more public comment.
Thank you, everyone. We're going to go close session. All right, good evening, folks. Apologies for the late start. I'm going to call back to order the Board of Education. We're going to start with our pleasure allegiance.
Everyone, we stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, 4.2 broadcast statement.
This meeting of the Sacramento City Unified School District is recorded. The recording will be cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. The recording will also be closed captioned and video streamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Monday, June 30th at 12:00 p.m. and Tuesday, July 1st at 6:00 p.m. on Metro Cable Channel 14. Once posted, the recording of this meeting can be viewed on demand at youtube.com/metrocable14. We welcome members of the audience to address the board. Please complete a speaker form, which are located in the back of the room, and give them to our communications representative, along with any handouts you may have for the board prior to the conclusion of the item's presentation. Please speak into that microphone when addressing the board and state your name for the record. Please limit comments during public comment to items that are not on the agenda. If you do comment on an item that is listed on the agenda, we will ask that you please defer your comments until your item comes up on the agenda. Please also either turn off your cell phones or place them on silent mode.
Thank you so much. 5.0 announcement of actions taken in closed session.
Good evening, President Singh. This evening, the board approved a settlement agreement related to OAH case number 2025-050529 and OAH case number 2025-050362, each one separately by a vote of 7 to 0. The board also took action in closed session to reject the government claim submitted by Michelle Justice on June 9th, 2025, on its merits related to a dispute over salary by a vote of 6 to 0 with Member Singh absent. The final announcement will be made by your superintendent.
Thank you. I am pleased to announce that the board approved the following appointment by a vote of 6 to 0 with Board Member Singh absent. The board approved the appointment of Jasmine Jones as principal of Bret Hart Elementary School.
All right, thank you so much. 6.0 agenda adoption. Do you have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion?
Second? On paper?
Aye.
All right, perfect, thank you. 7.0 public comment, out.
No public comment for 7.0.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to our consent agenda. You have a motion to approve our consent? Okay, go ahead.
There's something I need to follow.
Go for it.
Sorry, I meant to write it down, I forgot.
Q. Go ahead.
Okay, I would motion to approve except for 8.1Q because I'm going to refuse myself on that one.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Second?
Thank you. We'll do a roll call vote.
Member Jean?
Aye.
Member Kayata?
Aye.
Member Benjamin?
Aye.
Member Navarro?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Ibarra?
Aye.
And then 8.1Q, I'm on my kids' elementary school school site council, so I didn't think it'd be appropriate for me to vote on a so that I voted on already. I'm happy to leave the room temporarily.
I think you can just abstain on the vote if we just vote on 8.1Q separately. All right, so I will motion to move 8.1Q. Do you have a second? All right, let's do another vote on this with...
Okay. Member Jean?
Aye.
Member Kayata?
Abstain.
Member Benjamin?
Aye.
Member Navarro?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Ibarra?
Aye.
All right, thank you so much. Moving on to 9.0 communications report, let's start with 9.1 SETA.
Good evening again, members of the board. President Singh and Superintendent Allen. I'm Nikki Davis-Milewski, President of the Sacramento City Teachers Association. I spoke earlier, so I won't repeat all that I said, except to say that we have quite an exciting year ahead of us, and we hope that we can get our contracts settled so that we can all stay focused on the successful return to school in just fewer than two months. I do, however, want to discuss the St. Hope MOU before you tonight. We appreciate the matter being taken out of the consent agenda, and we appreciate that the five-year version before you has been strengthened. I think that this is a matter, this matter's being discussed, we should all be aware of the recent report from the state auditor, Grant Parks, concerning Highland Community Charter and the lack of oversight provided by both the Twin Rivers Unified School District and the Sacramento County Office of Education, which resulted in $180 million going to Highland that, at least according to the audit, was inappropriate. The defense offered by both the Twin Rivers Board and the Twin Rivers Superintendent was that they relied on the district staff and legal team to provide the appropriate oversight and left the details to them. As we've previously pointed out, we think we have the same problem here. After what happened at the last meeting, why is the district staff coming back with the two choices for an MOU? We were all at the last meeting. The board did not give direction to district staff to come back with a two-year watered-down version with numerous suggestions from St. Hope versus a stronger five-year version that largely disregards St. Hope's edits. On whose authority did the district negotiate a Plan A and a Plan B? You must wonder, who asked for the two-year version? Additionally, we appreciate that many of our suggested edits were incorporated into a stronger five-year MOU. Missing both versions that are before you tonight, though, was our request that the MOU include language that requires St. Hope to negotiate a good faith at collective bargaining agreement that would enable it to recruit and retain certificated educators the students at St. Hope so desperately need and absolutely deserve. The consent agenda version that was pulled included the following requirement: engagement with charter school teachers and Sacramento City Teachers Association to identify ways to support teachers in need of securing clear credentials. My guess is that the district staff and legal counselor are now advising you that including the requirement to bargain in good faith is problematic. How is requiring an employer to bargain in good faith problematic when previous versions required St. Hope to engage? The real problem is not whether it's legal or not, because it is. It's absolutely legal for you to include that language. It's whether the district staff, who's biased against SETA, which has been well documented, is willing to include enforceable standards like bargaining in good faith. The consent agenda version was full of vague, ambiguous, and largely unenforceable language that did very little to hold St. Hope accountable. But it's missing the key component to require them to bargain in good faith, which is a uniform and enforceable standard. We urge you to amend the five-year version to include that language. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have SEIU. DCS. Teamsters. UPE. 9.2 student member report.
The past few weeks have been tumultuous. Obviously, students haven't been in school the past few weeks, but that doesn't mean students have stopped thinking. Between the last board meeting and now, there has been a spike in ICE arrests, militarization against the American people in Los Angeles, and the United States launched an attack on Iran. I honestly don't have good words to express how destructive these events have been in the lives of students. Students are angry and scared and, most importantly, hopeless. I have seen so many Instagram stories, have read so many texts, and have had so many conversations about these events, but I think the most common thing I hear from students, especially teenagers, is that they feel powerless. This is one of the most educated and politically engaged generations of all time, which is amazing, but also burdensome. I think students are burnt out and pessimistic, and it's hard to blame them. I think my generation feels like our voices don't matter because, in a lot of ways, they don't. I think a lot of students try to cope with what's going on right now by making World War III jokes, or scapegoating minorities, or falling down an alt-right pipeline, or fully disengaging with politics in general, but I think these are all just responses to the same things. People are dying, and the news lets us see people dying and people's lives being ruined and taken at unfathomable levels. When every news story is terrible and depressing, it's easy to feel that posting Instagram stories or attending rallies won't do anything, and that's why so many people in my generation, I think, feel powerless and hopeless. I am not saying that it's the responsibility of this district to create a peace plan in the Middle East or stop Project 2025, but what I am saying is that it is the responsibility of this district to make students feel heard, and I think on that front, we are failing. Students hold infinitely more power here at local school district level politics than they do on the federal level, which makes it even more frustrating to me that students don't feel empowered to make their voices heard in this district. We need to listen to our students more, and I don't just mean the Student Advisory Council, I mean all 40,000 of our students. This district needs to do more to reach out more, ask more questions, and I don't think that anyone here at CERNAS can accurately describe what it's like to be a student in the year 2025, which is why you need to consult students who are actually experiencing what's going on right now. I think that listening to students more is the key to solving a lot of the issues in this district. And beyond students, I think that this district needs to get better at listening to families and community members. There's so many problems in this district, and we know this, but I feel like a lot of times, we don't act on these problems until it's too late. The action structure of SUSD is fundamentally flawed because, most of the time, it is deeply reactionary. It shouldn't take grand jury reports and SACB articles for us to take action, and I am tired of waiting for problems to get worse until they get better. Reflecting on the past year, it often feels like making things less bad rather than we are making things less bad rather than good, and this is not a sustainable method for change. I think there are a lot of hard-working, dedicated, and caring individuals in this district who truly want to make change. However, I think this change is often hindered and prevented because we're building up walls. We're building up physical walls in the lobby of CERNAS Center, but we're also building up metaphorical walls. This district makes it extremely difficult for students and families to get their voices heard. I think about the public comments over the course of this year and how many of them could have been avoided had a district employee just had a conversation with a parent or student. It's frankly embarrassing that community members feel like going to the board to give public comment is their only way for their issues to be heard. All this being said, I am hopeful. I think SUSD is one of the few places where I can say things are getting better politically, but I think the key word here is better, not good. We are still failing our students right now, and we will continue to fail our low-income students, our ESL students, our immigrant students, our Black students, and our special education students until we start listening to them. Despite budget cuts and loss of grant funding, this district still has access to the most valuable resources of them all: the ideas, thoughts, and opinions of students, so I hope we start making better use of that. Thank you.
So I would like to take the time that I have in my presence report to talk about some of the new great ideas we have around our district advisory committees, which, as you all know, if you've been following, we've been having a lot of conversation around strengthening and building out these ideas. So in January, our Board of Education asked staff to prepare additional information regarding existing district advisory committees, including the scope and purpose of each, so that we could make sure that we're not leaving out any topics or community populations that we need to consider to guide our decisions. In February, we appointed new advisory committees to be convened, for example, for restorative justice, policy, and special education. And as we began that process to fill these new committees, we realized that we need a new process to fill those positions, those committee positions. We feel, as a board, that these changes are needed to maximize the amount of voices that we are hearing from all corners of the district. And actually touching on some of the points that our student members raising is that making sure that we have more voices, more diverse voices, more voices from all corners that are there. So moving forward, we will be moving forward with an idea that an individual chosen to serve on a board advisory committee will only be allowed to serve on one committee. We have had many dedicated volunteers who have served our district in multiple committee spaces, and I profusely thank them for their time and commitment to our students, but as a board, we need to work harder, and again, hearing that, to fill our board committees with more unique voices and experiences. We also felt that we need to be assured that the feedback we're receiving from those directly experiencing our systems. So advisory committees will be required to represent the very trusty areas that we represent, in which they reside, and also that they be parents, guardians, or have a current Sac City student unless the committee seat is to be filled by a staff member. Again, I really do want to take the time to thank everyone who has stepped forward to volunteer and fill those vacancies on our advisory committees. The last thing we want to do is for these committees to have prolonged vacancies, which oftentimes we have. We have had prolonged vacancies, and it's time to change that here at this district. And we don't want any prolonged vacancies due to these changes. The board has developed a plan to increase our outreach to our parents, our students, our guardians, to fill out these committees, and I hope that it will lead to more robust reports from our committees in our future meetings. With that said, we will be posting applications, application forms for our district families for the restorative justice, LCAP, and community advisory schools, community schools advisory committees very, very soon. So that's my particular update for the district advisory committees. I also want to take a moment to just recognize something that I hope happened over in Central Unified School District outside of Fresno, where today they built a brand-new, they renamed, had a ribbon-cutting for a school that I wasn't able to attend the ribbon-cutting of, but it was for just one Sin Color, who's a human rights advocate from Punjab. So I think it's a huge deal for a community when you live in a concentrated community of your people, of your area, a place that I grew up in as well, to have a school named over after a freedom fighter, after influential... over after a freedom fighter, after an influential individual. It's always been empowering to go to schools named after MLK or Malcolm X, and to see other people who have had a role in building out not just this country, but actually having a role in building a better world, be recognized even at the local level in our school district is really impactful, and that is where we're unique. We, as school districts, are able to take on things that some folks would never have the ability to do at the federal or even state level, and it's a reminder to us that we have some very unique opportunities here to create change, because the changes that we create are actually going to go on and affect the changes at our city, county, state, and federal level. So, thank you. I'm going to pass it on to see if any of our other board members have any information that they'd like to share. Member Jean.
Since you talked about committees, I'd like to share that the Policy Committee met this week. We met with our superintendent and legal to hear about some of the amazing work that's already happening. The reality is, our current board policies are sorely out of date and need to be brought to an alignment with both federal and state laws. We're also rereading all of them with a lens for equity. The committee also shared that we are interested in targeting, looking at very specific policies. When we see continual issues popping up in the district, how can we make sure that our policies are addressing those more effectively, and to make sure that they're in line with where the current board is at? So this was kind of a meeting at the end of this school year to start putting together our plans for next school year, and we have another meeting scheduled and a plan for consistent meetings. Board, I want to let you know that you can anticipate that more policies will start being put on our agendas on a regular basis for us to be looking at, reading through, and discussing, and that will be a change we'll see on our agendas next year. So, super exciting stuff. The last thing I think I could add is the Policy Committee did deeply discuss the committee's structure that President Singh mentioned, recognizing that any committee established by the board is held to governance parameters similar to the board. I believe it's called the Green Act instead of the Brown Act, and we need to work with our committees more to ensure that they are in line with those governance expectations. We also want to put together clear parameters on what is it the committees are charged to do, how they can better support the board, how our liaisons can better communicate. So as Board Member Chu Grifick mentioned, the communities sometimes feel like they aren't heard, and really, the committees are a place where that's intended to be. So how do we better put governance and parameters in place so that communication and real work is happening? So I just, I want to say that rich conversations are happening in these subcommittees, and you'll be hearing more about it as we move forward.
Thank you for that update. Anyone else? All right. All right, so we're going to move over to item 10.1, which is recognizing our outgoing student board member. So I'll start us off, and then open it up for everyone to say kind and empowering things for a student board member. So for me, as we conclude this year, I want to take an opportunity to recognize and express my appreciation for your advocacy. I think it is, it is difficult to get up here and speak your truth, and you did it every single time, every single board meeting, and it's, it's actually empowering to me because I wish, you just said that this is the, this generation dealing with what you all are dealing with. I didn't, I dealt with some of this around 9/11 when I was in high school, but nothing like this, nothing like the fall of the feeling that democracy is at stake, the fearing, the fear that everything you're doing, everything you're fighting for is at stake. So everything that you are doing, that you have spoken up for, I actually do appreciate it. I want to thank you for the effort that you're putting in, and I know that you're going to go on and become a great leader, and whether you want to be a leader right here on this dais, or if you want to take your, your skill set further, we just wish you the best. And if you ever need anything from us, me specifically, feel free to reach out. I'm looking forward to your upward trajectory in whatever field that you take on. So, congratulations. All right, I'll pass it over to our board members. Member Navarro.
Hi, Justine. So I feel a little cheated. I only got to spend half a year with you. I wish we had another six months, but I can't wait to see what happens in your senior year and beyond. I'm excited for you, and I want to thank you for always speaking for students, and that was empowering for me as well, to hear you speak about it. It's been great, and good luck.
So I'll keep it brief, but I just want to really thank you for really pushing us to remember what it's like to be a kid. I, I think, you know, you focused a lot on elevating the student voice, but I think maybe something you haven't realized you've done is remind us of how we felt when we were this age and why these things are so important. I think it's fairly safe to say that all of us were very active when we were in high school in some way or another, and to kind of take ourselves out of these adult spaces and adult problems and remind ourselves of the impact we have on our current students is, it's been really great. So I really appreciate your voice, and I wish you well with wherever you go. Like President Singh said, anything you need, the door is always open, and you've truly been amazing on this board. Thank you.
Member Navarro.
Yes? I didn't hear correctly. Sorry. Oh, Justine, it is such a pleasure to sit next to you on the dais this short period of time, but just to really grow with you, I don't think that I was expecting to learn so much from a student board member, and I'm trying not to get emotional up here, because you know the conversations that we've had, but just to know how much of your personal life reflects in your advocacy, I think is the most beautiful part for me as a mother. So just know that sometimes sacrifices as families, you know, as a family, we can't always be there for, for our kids, but when I get to see your mom pick you up, I just see the pride in her face, and I want you to know that your parents are so proud of you, and it's like such an honor to, to be able to sit next to you and be like, man, you know, I'm, I'm encouraging kids like this. But I think the overarching message that I want to give you tonight is that when you sit up here and speak, they don't fault, your words don't fall on deaf ears, at least not with, with me, and I don't think anybody in here takes your words lightly, but the way you've been able to shape, I think, conversations when we walk out of here is an even bigger statement, Justine, and so keep doing what you're doing. I look forward to see what your future is like. I'll be right beside you your senior year because I am your representative, but know that whatever your future, you know, whatever you have for, for your future, I want to be there to support it. So if that means you have a future in politics, then I will be right here to support you in whatever that looks like, and if that means that you just need an extra push from an adult from time to time, I'm here for you too. So thank you for your leadership and your advocacy.
Thank you. Member Benjamin.
Yeah, so I, I just want to say, we've shared little words, but we've shared a lot of moments, and, and as Member Ybar said, we don't want you to think that your words fall on, on deaf ears, because we, we hear you, and, and what you say a lot of times, we take out of here and, and they continue inside our conversations. It takes a lot of courage to do what you're doing. I remember myself in high school, and I would like to fancy myself as an advocate, but you, the way you articulate and represent your student body is, is very good. I think I wrote in your card to continue to allow your voice to inspire others. You have a, a very pronounced voice, you, what you say, you mean, and, and that's going to get you a, a long way. And so I want to say thank you. You're inspiring. What happens is that your experience here and your voice here, it kind of sets the standard for who comes next, and that's what's important. So continue to always leave a legacy, okay, and continue to always be an advocate. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, we're going to embarrass you and take a photo down there with you. So let's do it.
Whatever.
Are you going to take your apple out, or you want it?
You want me to hold the box like Bonnet, what's your name from?
It's very...
This is a nice small apple.
All right. Item 10.2, approve operational MOU with Saint Hope Public Schools.
There we go. Good evening, Board. I am pleased to introduce Leslie Locker, who is our attorney, our counsel from F3 Law, who works on charter matters. She is going to present to you all tonight, and then I will be available to answer questions with her at the end.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Singh, members of the board, and Superintendent Allen. Thank you for having me back again. It's a pleasure. I wanted to start out by just providing a little background in terms of charter authorization. As you know, you authorize several charter schools, and authorization does not stop at approval. It is going to consist of robust oversight, and that oversight process is going to really inform renewal. It's going to inform whether any type of corrective actions need to be taken. It's going to inform revocation and ultimately potential closure of a charter school if they are not meeting the terms of their charter, the law, et cetera. And what I want to share is that this is a very delicate balance. Charter schools do have a level of autonomy that's granted to them under the Education Code. However, that autonomy is not absolute. It is tethered back to the district's oversight responsibilities and ensuring that they are accountable not just to the district, but to their students, to their families, to the community, and to the taxpayers. Under this slide, we have the basics within the Education Code that are going to set out the minimum oversight responsibilities for a school district authorizer, and I really want to emphasize here that this is the floor. This is certainly not the ceiling. Best practices include providing robust oversight that extend far beyond just the very limited enumerated examples that you see here. And that is something that the district has taken very seriously over the past two years, in which they're really trying to build a strong foundation and a paper trail that is going to not only provide for meaningful oversight, but it's also going to create clear expectations for each of the charter schools, so they know exactly what is expected of them and what this process is going to look like over the annual oversight process each year. So what is a memorandum of understanding in this context in terms of the district charter relationship? It's a formal agreement that is going to supplement the approved charter, and it's really going to outline what the expectations are of the district as the authorizer. And it's not intended to replace the charter. The way I like to explain it is that a charter is essentially a very robust, comprehensive business plan or operational plan for how the petitioners say they're going to operate a school to serve public school children. But it's not a two-way street like an MOU will be. An MOU is really designed to describe that relationship, and it's an iterative process. It's back and forth, it's negotiated, and it provides an opportunity to really clarify what the roles and the respective responsibilities are of the parties as part of this relationship for the five-year term typically that, that is approved by the governing board when they at least first start, and then upon the various renewals. But again, I really want to emphasize that this is not a replacement, it's to supplement. But what's nice about it is that if a charter school doesn't meet the promises that are set out in the MOU, that in addition to the charter, in addition to the law, are things that, again, we can hold them accountable to. And there's means by which we can carry out various corrective actions to ensure that compliance. So just as a bit of background, by the 23-24 school year, all of the MOUs that the district had in place with its charters were either expired or they were non-existent. And so the goal here is that by this month, there will be four out of 10 independent charter schools with MOUs. And really, the priority was focusing on those that were up for renewal this year, and that's why we have the four listed. But by next year, by June 2026, the intent is to have all 10 independent charter schools with MOUs, as well as all six of your dependents with MOUs. And in terms of how this whole thing materialized, the MOU started out as a template from my office. I created the large part of it, and then this was floated to the charter schools so that they could review it, and they collectively negotiated, is my understanding, as a group, and provided their various proposed revisions. But what we also did was we included specific provisions that were unique to each charter school, and as it relates to Saint Hope, some of those provisions included the conditions, as you'll recall, that were set out as part of the corrective action plan that Saint Hope had put together, as well as what were identified during the renewal process and ultimate board action on those renewal petitions. So as you'll recall, at the last board meeting on June 5th, the, the MOU was presented for Saint Hope that had started with the template, and then it included those conditions. My understanding, and I was not at the meeting, but my understanding that was that board direction was provided to staff to integrate some additional component parts to address some concerns, and that included additional items associated with teacher credentialing and hiring processes, actions that would strengthen transparency and accountability as it relates to how complaints and investigations are handled, and then also really ensuring clear lines of demarcation between the various Saint Hope-related entities, so that it's clear as the authorizer what these entities are, what they do, and how they support Saint Hope Public Schools. What it did not include, and this is something I do want to address because I know it was raised earlier, is it does not include provisions requiring Saint Hope to bargain with SCTA. And what I want to underscore here is that there is a requirement under the law that the charter school in a petition has to declare whether it will be the exclusive public school employer for purposes of the EERA for the employees that are employed with the charter school. So the charter school has the exclusive right to deal with the labor relations as it relates to their employees and unions. That is not within the purview of the district as the authorizer. That is exclusive to the charter school. So we had sent over those edits based upon the board direction. They, Saint Hope, provided their respective proposed revisions back to us. Because we had a few slight differences in some of the language, we wanted to provide the board with both version A and version B, understanding that this is the board's prerogative, and we didn't want to make that decision on behalf of the board which version you're going to see. And so version A is a slightly more permissive set of provisions. It's only a few that really are different from the version B, but what we did here was we included a shorter two-year term, and that two-year term would expire on June 30th, 2027, and the purpose for that is to allow for a shortened period of time for us to evaluate whether Saint Hope is able to comply with the terms of the MOU, and that we feel confident that we are moving forward in a positive direction that is built upon accountability and transparency. Version B is going to have a little bit less permissive language, but it's also going to have a longer five-year term, and that term is tracking the term of the charter school. So, so when they're up for renewal is when the MOU would also expire. So I wanted to present what the options are for the board this evening. So the board can choose version A or B or present additional modifications if it so desires. If it approves the MOU, then it will go to the Saint Hope Public Schools board, and if they approve it, then we will initiate the, the MOU, and we will start implementing the provisions. and we will start implementing the provisions. If the board does not approve the MOU, then they can certainly, you can all certainly direct staff to make further edits, and we would return to the board. I do want to note that there is a condition that we specified that an MOU would be in place by July 1. However, if it is the board's prerogative and desire to make further edits to that document, we can certainly move that along and bring this back when you return, I believe in August. If St. Hope does not approve the MOU, then again, the board can direct further edits, and we can return with that document. Or the board does have the option to serve a notice of violation because, again, that was a condition that was imposed as part of the renewal. I will tell you that if this were to materialize in this way, there would be a lot of discussion before that occurs, and it is a long road. A notice of violations is essentially the first step in a revocation proceeding. And it's not to say that that is how it would end up, but it is a long process. So I just want to provide that caveat. So in terms of our various options, I wanted to present some of the motion language for your consideration. So option A would be to make a motion to adopt version A of the MOU between the parties, and that will be for that limited two-year term. Again, it's little, slightly more permissive language. Option B would be to approve version B that was presented to you, and that would be for the five-year term. If no motion is made, or if either option A or option B do not carry, then the board can provide further direction to staff to prepare additional edits to the MOU, and again, bring it back for the board's consideration at a future meeting. And that concludes my presentation. And Dr. Goldman and I will be available for questions after public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Nikki, do we have any public comment?
We have nine.
The first public comment is Jim Scheible, followed by Alicia Ferguson Parsons, followed by Samuel Bello.
Good evening, President Singh, board members, Superintendent Allen, execs staff, and community members. Thank you for having me speak tonight. My name is Jim Scheible. I worked with St. Hope Public Schools from 2006 to 2018. And for many of those years, I was actually the primary point of contact between St. Hope Public Schools and the district. So I have a long partnership with Deputy Superintendent Mary Harden Young. And I think Superintendent Allen, you and I met in 2010 when we first got a SAC City after-school program at PS7 with Dr. Janee Brown, if I recall correctly. I think you helped us with that process, so thank you for that. So tonight, I'm here in the spirit of partnership again. I'm helping out St. Hope Public Schools. As you know, they had a loss in their family back in early May with their superintendent passing. So myself and some others have agreed to try to get them through the end of this fiscal year into July 1. And so I'm here tonight to talk about the MOU, and again, that spirit of partnership. And so I think part of partnership comes transparency and also accountability. For transparency, all of you received an email last night from myself. It had contained a statement from the St. Hope Public Schools board outlining their position on the MOU in hopes of communicating, again, with transparency, how they want to be in partnership with you all and work with you all to make sure that students are being served as best as possible, but also so that you can hold them accountable. And on the accountability side, looking at the MOU that's come back since the June 5 meeting, I believe there's 24 to 25 edits in that realm. St. Hope Public Schools has accepted over 20 of them. They're fine. Hold us accountable to high expectations. Hold us to make sure we're serving students and families well, that we're doing the best we can by our staff and teachers. Excellent. There are two edits that we're proposing if you were to look at version A of the MOU. I want to leave aside the number of years. That's up for the board to decide. That was not a St. Hope Public Schools decision or consultation. It was presented by staff to you all those options. If you want two years, that's up to you. Three, four, five, however you want to set up those years is up to you. But in terms of the edits to version A of the MOU, you can see them before you. I was planning on presenting these visually, but since that's not an option, I will put my copies on the back table just so the members of the public have access to that as well. And then the last thing I want to present, it came up during this conversation, President Singh, so I hope I have a few more seconds, is that I know that it's been mentioned twice that the SCTA item is not in the MOU. If you'll recall, in that MOU, it is actually holding St. Hope Public Schools accountable to deliver on its own action plans that it submitted to this board in August of 2024. St. Hope Public Schools' own action plans already commit St. Hope Public Schools to work with SCTA on those very items around teacher credentialing. So because the MOU is essentially ensuring that St. Hope Public Schools will enforce its own action plans, that language that was discussed and requested, while it's not in the MOU itself, it's in the documents that St. Hope Public Schools has committed to executing on as part of their plan, again, from August of 2024. So that's my public comment. Myself and some other members of the St. Hope Public Schools team are also here for any questions should they come up. And I appreciate your time, and I appreciate you letting me go a little bit over to address that last item. And like I said, these two documents that you received, I'm just going to put them on the back table. And maybe for folks in the room, if they want to take a picture instead of take the document, because there's only one copy, that would be better. So thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Alicia Ferguson Parsons.
And I just respectfully ask that we stay within two minutes. I don't want to cut anyone off.
Good evening, President Singh, board members, Superintendent Allen, and members of the SEUSD staff and community. My name is Alicia Ferguson Parsons. I am the current Director of Operations for St. Hope Public Schools. And I'm also really proud to say that as of July 1, I will be the interim superintendent for St. Hope Public Schools. Thanks. I've actually been with St. Hope Public Schools since 2016, June of 2016. And I'm just excited to have the privilege to lead our schools, our scholars, our community, and all of our staff in this next endeavor, while also working to increase partnerships and community with the shared goal of improved student outcomes in mind. As the incoming leader of St. Hope Public Schools, I want to express our desire to partner with SAC City Unified School District. Tonight, our goal is obviously to come to an agreement on an MOU that is workable both for SEUSD and for SHPS. However, I do hope that we have the opportunity to meet and come together so that we can also continue this work and find other partnerships and ways to collaborate for our scholars and for our community. We know that there are opportunities to growth at St. Hope Public Schools, as there are with any district, any organization, really. And I know that I am committed in my new role to really focus on those and get us to where we need to be. And I can promise you that we have already been planning for this upcoming school year, and we've already hit the ground running. The shared desire for improvement is why we've been working with the district for the past nine months to find an MOU and to craft an MOU that puts into place the oversight that the district desires and actually has those appropriate checks and balances and addresses all of your concerns. While we know and believe that this accountability is important, we also want to make sure this agreement focuses on oversight and does not overreach and dictate operations at St. Hope Public Schools. St. Hope Public Schools serves a unique population of scholars, the majority who come from traditionally underserved communities. I know that this board's goal is to ensure that all scholars, no matter where they come from, get the education that they deserve. When it comes to our scholars and our community, it is important that we think about not whether it is a district school they attend or a charter school, but that they are getting the education that they deserve. And that is what we all want for our scholars and our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board President Singh, board members, Superintendent Allen, and SEUSD staff. My name is Samuel Bello. I'm a retired senior telecommunications engineer from the state of California, EF Johnson Technologies, and CDX Wireless Consulting Company. Currently, I serve as a sixth-grade math teacher at PS7 Middle School. I rise in support of 10.2 and encourage each of you to do the same. I, as many St. Hope Public School teachers do every day, struggle to bridge the enormous educational gap that exists between Black and Brown students. Success takes time. We can't just wave a magic wand and expect everything that has been done to be undone. But yet, we do everything that we can as teachers to try to help inspire, challenge, and empower these students every single day. I have seen great success in the classroom at St. Hope Public School, and I'd like to see more done. Every day, I wake up and I say, why am I coming to this school? And I have to answer it and say, if I don't show up, who will? And if I don't show up, who will be there for those students? And if there is no St. Hope Public School, if there is no PS7, then many of these students will fall to the wayside. I'm going to close by letting you know that there are success stories in this past year. As a math teacher, I walked into the classroom and was shocked that only 2% of the previous year, the students were proficient in math. By the end of that time, by the end of the year, I've raised it to 16%. It wasn't me, but the tenacity of those students and by changing their mentality, their focus, and being very intentional every day, as we all are. I hope you too support St. Hope Public School. Thank you.
Faheza Alim, followed by Brad Bernstein, followed by Zion Jamison.
Good evening. I didn't bring my glasses, so I'm going to struggle a little bit. My name is Faheza Alim. I am the mother of four successful, college-educated adult children who graduated from Sacramento High Schools. Thank you for the opportunity to address this most important issue of education, and specifically St. Hope Schools. My youngest son graduated from Sacramento High School in 2007. He had a very positive and supportive experience after I transferred him from our neighborhood school, Kennedy High School, because it was too large and too impersonal. At SAC High, I found teacher accountability and welcome feedback and communication with the staff. My son graduated from SAC High with honors and went on to attend Fresno State. He is now a responsible young man and successful corporate HR recruiter. I want that success for all of our children who are getting lost in the shuffle at large high schools. I must say that after reading the news reports on St. Hope and the issues addressed by the school board, I really think you are caught up in the weeds of bureaucracy and bureaucratic issues and not focusing enough on the educational successes of our children at St. Hope. Let's keep our eyes on the prize and approve the version A of the MOU with the recommended changes. Thank you.
Tough act to follow. Good evening, President Singh, Superintendent Allen, members of the board and staff. My name is Brad Bernstein. I've had the privilege of teaching and advising at Sacramento Charter High School. I'm not just here tonight as an educator, but I'm here as a committed member of our community who believes in our school. And every day, I see students. I see students who are hungry for direction, structure, eager to grow, eager to achieve, and capable of greatness. But we all know they can't do it alone, and they need mentors. They need leaders. They need adults who show up, not just physically, with purpose and heart, much like Sam was saying. That's what we owe them. So that's what I do every single day when I show up. More importantly, I know I'm not alone. I see it. I see it every day. I see a team of extraordinary people committed to a shared vision and bound by a desire to make a difference. So do we have work to do? Yes. But more importantly and most importantly, we have the people here to do it. So thank you for your time.
Good evening. Sorry. Good evening, Board President Singh, board members, Superintendent Allen, and SEUSD staff. My name is Zion Jamison, and I'm a 4.0 student athlete at Sacramento Charter High School. In a community that has been historically underserved, St. Hope Public Schools sets high expectations and helps students meet them. This is evidenced by the fact that 97% of SAC High's class of 2025 were accepted into a four-year university. St. Hope's Public Schools has been a consistent and committed presence in Oak Park for over 30 years, offering not just high-quality education, but a vision for opportunity and empowerment. There are a variety of clubs you can join at SAC High. Ever since I joined Barber Club, my confidence has boosted from 0% to 100% in just five months. When I first heard about Barber Club, I felt inspired and dedicated to learn new tips and techniques about cutting hair, cutting different styles and textures of hair. Then I started realizing, my friends who never thought about being a barber are now cutting hair next to me. I feel that Barber Club brings people from Oak Park community together and inspires others that you can do anything you can put your mind to. And it also teaches us how to be consistent, especially when times are hard. A wise staff member, oh my gosh, sorry. A wise staff member from SAC High once told me, "Once you start learning, the eldest appears." Thank you for listening to me speak.
Thank you.
Our next speakers are Jana Lee, Jevia Willis, and Fay Lawrence.
Good evening, Board President Singh, board members, Superintendent Allen, and SEUSD staff. My name is Jana Lee, and I am a SAC High parent and alumni. St. Hope Public Schools, in our family's experience, has offered a vision for hope, empowerment, and opportunity. When my son arrived at SAC High this summer going into his sophomore year, he transferred from Rio Americano, a predominantly white school where he felt like he did not belong. He was deflated, struggling mentally, and barely made it through the school year. When he came home from his first football practice that summer, I saw life and excitement in his eyes again. He said, "Mom, this is the place for me. I belong here." Kimby Drayton, his coaching staff, and the team welcomed him with open arms. I do not have to tell you that representation matters, as you all have touched on tonight, that my son seeing people that look like him making important decisions, leading with compassion, and serving the community is inspiring. As a scholar, my son has found peace and has grown to love his teachers, coaches, and administrators. My, uh, sorry. A place where he can be himself, where he feels accepted. And it is not only, he is not only thriving, he is not only surviving, he is thriving, ending his junior year with a 3.45 GPA. As a parent, I have found immense support. Ms. Christina Williams, the late Ms. Lisa Ruda, teachers, support staff, and coaches have welcomed not only him, but our entire family. They have an open-door policy that provides a space for parents to be heard and our opinions valued. They foster partnership and invite communication and collaboration. Every school has its issues, and there is always room for improvement. But it is more than disheartening the attack and false claims that the media has made against St. Hope, SAC High, and its staff, and it could not be further from the truth. SAC High staff embodies commitment, acceptance, support, empowerment, and inspiration. This school is special, and I am so grateful for our SAC High family. Thank you for listening.
Good evening, Board President Singh, board members, Superintendent Allen, and SEUSD staff. My name is Jevia Willis, and I will be a senior in August at SAC High. I transferred to SAC High my freshman year, and this school has done everything possible to make me who I am today. Being a student at SAC High has made me appreciate being a part of something bigger than myself. I've had the chance to grow and become a better version of myself, be there for my community, and truly understand the impact we can have when we support and uplift one another. I'm a part of the tiered team, SAC High Senate and Dual Enrollment Program, and I hope to do more this upcoming school year. For example, SAC High put together a trip for students to go to different colleges in the Bay Area, Southern California. I got to experience those trips, and it helped me realize what college has to offer for me and which college I want to go to. While getting my college credits right now, I hope to be accepted into Long Beach University and major in psychology. I truly feel that this school has prepared me to go to college and motivated me to pursue a higher education. I am very grateful for all these opportunities, and thank you for listening, and have a good evening.
Good evening. I had a lot to say, but I know that time is really short, so I'm just going to kind of cut to my main points. First of all, thank you for the work that you do. Thank you for hearing us out. Thank you for hearing us out. My name is Fay Lawrence, and I've been with St. Hope as a parent and a staff member since I want to talk to you guys about what's brought us here, and it's the articles from the Sacramento Bee. Let me be clear, these are not about student safety, academic outcomes, or community well-being. It is a decades-long campaign by a teachers' union that has never accepted our success or our presence on the Sac High campus. Now, they've found a partner and a Sac Bee reporter who is not acting as a journalist, but as an activist, working closely with a former employee who was not let go for being a whistleblower, but was terminated for repeated misconduct. It included bullying, harassment, and creating a toxic environment. I was one of the individuals that she harassed. This part of the story has been left out. The reporting is one-sided, incomplete, and deeply damaging, not just to our organization, but especially to the very people that make our mission possible every day, our Black educators and leaders who are being unfairly targeted and disparaged. Now, this board is being asked to reverse course, not based on new facts, but on biased writings. Please don't let outside agendas do decades of proven work. At the end of the day, this is an attack on the students we serve. They deserve better, not to be pawns in a political agenda. They deserve the stability, opportunity, and the excellence we've worked tirelessly to provide. I'm asking you to please stand with us, stand with truth, and most of all, stand with the children who go to high school in Oak Park. Thank you.
Thank you so much for all the public comments. I'm gonna open up to a board discussion, and we will start with Member Kayada.
Okay, Member Rhodes had a question. I do have like three pages typed out, so if you want to ask it, okay. All right, so I did write this out because this is important and is very sensitive, as we've heard, and I want to make sure I get it right. The remarks I prepared are designed to prepare a collaborative, yet structured path forward that ensures that St. Hope is meeting its charter obligations. I want to start by addressing the current status of the MOU, the version that we have here today, the two versions actually. It remains a work in progress, in my opinion. There's a couple of formatting errors and some ambiguous language, and I would like to clarify my expectations for a final MOU. I also want to acknowledge that the version presented to the board several weeks ago did not sufficiently address the concerns raised by the prior board when we renewed the charter or the comments that our new board members have shared. So that is all, I think, very important that we have reflected here today. And Amanda, I can give you a copy of this, so you don't need to write it. So I have two main areas I want to talk about. One is charter schools and public accountability, and the other one is specific to St. Hope. So the first is about charter schools generally. In my view, charter schools should represent an exception to the general principle that students receiving a public education are served in schools governed by locally elected school boards. We as board members who are directly accountable to the voters and taxpayers who elect us. In contrast, charter schools operate one step removed from this form of democratic accountability. Sacramento residents cannot vote out St. Hope leadership if public funds are mismanaged or students lack access to essential educational resources like textbooks and curriculum. Any departure from the traditional public school model should be carefully limited and accompanied by very strict and robust oversight. I understand and acknowledge why charter schools exist in California's education landscape. When governed transparently and with appropriate oversight, they can serve as a form of constructive competition. They can act as a check on the performance of traditional public schools. When district schools are underperforming, families have the option to seek alternatives with the associated funding following that student. However, because charter schools operate with greater flexibility, they must be held to higher standards. Their educational outcomes and operational practices should exceed those of district schools, not merely match them. In this light, I see charter schools as mechanisms for reform, not replacements of traditional schools. They should offer innovations and push public schools to improve. Over time, as district schools adapt and close performance gaps, which we are seeking to do, charter schools should either evolve to continue driving improvement or sunset when their mission has been fulfilled. Throughout that process, the imperative for rigorous oversight remains constant. These are public funds, and they require public accountability. So turning to St. Hope, I am cognizant of the controversy that has surrounded St. Hope since it entered the charter school space. Sacramento High School, which was the second-oldest public high school in California, was abruptly closed and within months reopened as Sacramento Charter High School, retaining the school's mascot colors and a nearly identical name. In fact, the shirts we're seeing here today just say Sac High on them. In my view, those actions were intentionally provocative and reflected a lack of confidence in the public school system. Those involved in these decisions sent a message that charter schools were not simply complimentary alternatives to traditional schools, but a declared solution to a perceived public school failure. Although not as blatant, that message extends to PS7, and I do not accept these premises. Nevertheless, as I've stated before, I'm going to reiterate it tonight, the decision I'm making now is not based on the past and the historical legacy of St. Hope, but the current realities. Today, St. Hope appears to be serving students and communities where district schools continue to face challenges. To the extent that this performance is encouraging district improvements, then St. Hope is meeting the bargain of why charter schools exist in state law. At the same time, I remain concerned about St. Hope's persistent governance issues, staffing instability, and disciplinary practices. As the authorizing agency and as stewards of the taxpayer dollars that fund these schools, it is our responsibility as a board to address these concerns directly. So to do so, I have several comments on the MOU. So as we know, we have two options. Option A is more flexible and limited in duration, and Option B spans the full term of the charter we renewed, and it includes stronger accountability measures. And I am very much in favor of proceeding with Option B with a couple revisions. As the Kristi White report from several years ago demonstrated, with St. Hope, we are not in a trust-but-verify place at the moment. We are currently in a verify-and-enforce place. This MOU, therefore, should reflect the conditions the previous board established as prerequisites for charter renewal. It should also apply for the full charter term, and it should include the strongest enforceable language that we can get. The specific revisions I have are basically three, and I would welcome to see if anyone else has any as well. So the first one, and this is the least intense one, but for paragraph 28A, which relates to Action Plan 1, there looks like there's a formatting error where two paragraphs got combined, and you can see the difference when you look at Option A. And it is, I know you're looking for it, it's a sentence that begins with engagement of an accounting firm. So it looks like that used to be its own clause in its own sub-paragraph. Anyway, the point I'm bringing this up is that I want to make sure that the entire document is properly formatted with clear grammar and that we can ensure that it's fully enforceable and avoid any sort of issues like that. So turning to the other two revisions I have, one is paragraph 28C, which is Action Plan 3 from the charter renewal. I am concerned with the inclusion of a specific individual's names to address potential conflicts of interests. This approach, in my opinion, is unnecessarily personal and could be counterproductive. With respect to Cassandra Jennings, I've come to respect her dedication to Sacramento's youth. I don't know Kevin Hestand personally, but I would say my reading of the Kristi White report for both of them focuses on their roles rather than any misconduct we can apply to specifically them. And I also am cognizant that if we name individuals, they could create a loophole where others could assume similar roles and not violate the MOU because we are calling out two specific people. For paragraph 29, this is for dictatorial corrective actions. Sub-paragraph A, again, I feel like I'm being a lawyer here, but in sub-paragraph A on policy updates, I believe this might exceed the scope of our authority as an oversight body, and I don't want to get caught up in unnecessary legal disputes. So I would, instead of implying that St. Hope must accept our proposed changes, I would like it to require that they work collaboratively with us on any necessary updates. And again, that is for timely and effective remediation rather than dragging ourselves into disputes. So in summary, I am recommending adopting Option B with revisions and any other revisions the board might have. And I believe the revised MOU in summary should address the outstanding areas of concern that we raised at charter renewal. It should be the most binding and enforceable language permitted under law, and again, it should apply for the full term. And I am not calling for a motion now, but I would say in line with that, something I would think would be appropriate for us to do, instead of approving something with changes that we're making here on the fly tonight, I would ask that we authorize the superintendent to execute the MOU. After we get changes, they're circulated to the board, we can provide feedback directly to the superintendent or to Amanda. If the changes that are handled this way are appropriate and the board agrees with them, then we proceed. If there is continued confusion, then it would come back. But again, my goal is to get this in place sooner than later so we can start enforcing it. That is, that's it. Hopefully that was helpful.
Thank you, Member Kayada. Do we have any other questions, comments for our team up here? Member Jean.
I've done a carefully read through the MOU, and I've already sent some questions and got some great like feedback and processing of where we are. I want to start just by saying I really, really appreciate how many of our concerns were addressed in this. And just to briefly remind, I actually brought my notes from our meeting in September when we were trying to kind of process through what our concerns were. We had huge concerns about governance realities, the fact that the public records were not being posted, that there were not agendas in minutes, there weren't clear bylaws, we weren't sure how the board members were chosen, there were conflicts of interest, et cetera. And so I really appreciate that there are clear parameters on, and I actually did some Googling and see that things are up online and that there are some changes in growth there, so that is good. And the second huge one we had was all of the fiduciary concerns, the fact that at the time, this is what's in my brain, and I may be inaccurate, there's about a $15 million budget, and a million of it was going to two companies who predominantly only serve the charter. And I'm sorry, that makes zero sense to me. So I very much appreciate that there are parameters around $250,000 so that we can start tracking when big expenses are coming in. Do they seem appropriate? Are there conflicts of interest? Are they going to meet the needs, et cetera? It looks too that we are putting into place the generally accepted accounting practices, our independent audits, financial submissions, et cetera. So I really appreciate that. Another big one was programmatic, and I do see that in the action plans. I did have one question on number 20. Actually, let me look here, it'll be faster. Okay. I think it was a number, a number 19A. Some of the concerns and the stories that we had been hearing is that core instructional materials were not making it to students, whether there wasn't a cleared adoption process, whether it wasn't getting into students' hands, getting into teacher hands, getting into classrooms. And so I liked seeing that 9A says that the core instructional materials by grade and content will be made available to us. My concern is, what about like distribution, confirming that not only have they been adopted, but that they are actually in use, people are getting the training they need, students are getting the access they need, et cetera? So is there an intent that we would be doing that in the current language, or do we need to add something that says that that's part of our expectation?
So we certainly can add it, but that is something that is part of our normal site visits.
Oh, great.
So I go to every school at least once a year, often more. I am in the classrooms, eyeballs on materials, eyeballs on teachers, I interview teachers. So those are parts of our routine site visit. In addition, as I shared with you by email, but I'll share with the whole board, both St. Hope Schools are part of the County Williams Inspection List for the next three years, so there will be kind of two layers of that, and that is one of the things that they inspect for. So we kind of have a belt and suspenders on that.
Excellent. And then I'll go ahead and point out, just so the board knows, if you look at 12B, that's where the $250,000 annually is the fiduciary responsibility where Amanda will be keeping her eyes on things when there is a business or administrative agreement, and I appreciated that. The last one that is in action plans, but I still feel unsettled about comes to employees. The fact that we still have, at best, 25% of the teachers credentialed, and the best resource students have to receive an excellent education is a highly qualified instructor. And I want to speak to, it's not just the skills that come through going through the teaching credentialing process, a lot of us could talk about the experience of that, but it's the teaching consistently the same subject. It's the feeling powerful to speak up when I see things that are concerning me. The consistent turnover of teachers, the fact that we are not attracting and retaining, at least that's what I'm hearing, is incredibly concerning. And the fact that the folks they're able to get are not credentialed, and yes, I see the action plans, and that's important to me. And I recognize, let me go ahead and ask this question. Leslie, you mentioned that the petition would determine if they were going to be the exclusive representative or not, correct? Does the St. Hope petition include any language around that?
Yeah, it's a required component, a required element, and I don't have the petition before me.
That's fine.
But it's St. Hope Public Schools. They are the exclusive public school employer, and that's generally, by and large, what you would expect to see in any charter petition for an independent charter school.
So that means they are held to the EERA?
Correct.
And PERB and all of those processes?
Correct.
I didn't necessarily, is that in here, and I missed that? Did we say anything? Because there's a lot of lists of, we're holding you, sounds like your boilerplate, you need to follow law. Here are the laws for, like ed code and whatnot. But I didn't see ERA or PERB mentioned. Does it need to be, or is that expected?
No, because it's set out in the charter. So they're held accountable not just to the MOU, like I was saying, this supplements, but it doesn't replace.
Got it.
So because it's in the charter, they're held to the requirements set out in their charter, the promises that they're making. So that would be what we refer to, and we don't need to duplicate the effort in the MOU.
Perfect. I was going to use the word duplicative. Okay, awesome. Thank you. So yeah, the action plans here are super important to me, that the employees do feel empowered and that we are seeing consistency and growth there. Those were kind of my specific comments about what we had given as guidance and where the MOU stands. Taylor, I really appreciate, Member Kayada, I appreciate you mentioning that we aren't in a trust-but-verify place, we're in a verify-and-as-needed-enforce. And I'm thinking about, since last September, when we were having all these conversations, we brought up these concerns, and then of course, we have the news and the coach and what has been in the Sac Bee. I'm also concerned that the PS7 results would actually give us, at this time, if the charter were being asked to renew, we would have grounds to deny it, and I think that needs to be publicly acknowledged, that it felt that they had asked really early for us to make sure we were renewing. In fact, they took a whole year off of their renewal because they asked as early as they did. And then this data comes in, and I'm sorry, that does not build any faith in me, it makes me wonder what was known. The second concern I had is we had made it very, very clear that conflicts of interest, particularly fiduciarily, were very, very concerning, and having anybody be in both places that are having contracts and money with St. Hope, but also a role with St. Hope is a problem. And then in the tragedy that the school suffers, they immediately put one of those folks back in that place. That is concerning? I don't understand that. So I'm sitting here going, I want to partner, I want to collaborate, but I'm not in a place where I have a ton of trust, and I need an MOU that makes it very clear, so I know as a board what my job is, and that we are not overstepping or overreaching, because that is not my job. But these are public monies that have been given to these folks to provide public education to kids, and they deserve it, and it's our job to make sure that's happening. So I reiterate, I'm with Member Kayada, that Option B, five years with all of that clarity, because that's the length of our charter, makes the most sense right now, because I don't have a lot of other trust at the moment, based on the info that's coming to me.
Thank you, Member Jean. Member Iba.
I'm not, I don't want to reiterate, because that's what's going to happen. I am in agreement with just about all of the comments that you made this evening, Board Member Kayada, and also Jean. What I will say is, I take my role very seriously. This is more a message to the public. When I come up here, I'm not up here as a puppet to anybody. I am up here to represent the students first, and I will always do that. Now, this in particular is very personal to me, because I grew up in Oak Park. A lot of you may not know that. And so I understand the full history of everything that goes behind it. And my only concern here around the allegations that were made outside of what we're talking about, the MOU, are students, and I take those very seriously. Now, for some of you, that may seem like it was middle grounds for this political thing, but for me, I went to bed worrying about, were those kids heard? Did they felt heard? Did they have closure? And if they were false allegations, what closure did the community get? Because clearly, it wasn't there for still here in this space, in this awkward space of conversation, when the focus should really be around accountability. Accountability is not comfortable. I have to be accountable. I have to be in uncomfortable situations, in closed session and in open session, in conversations that I'm having with constituents or with other folks on the board. Accountability is not comfortable, but it's the right thing to do, and I think that as a district, in order for us to push forward for all of our charters... And I think that as a district, in order for us to push forward for all of our charters, not just Saint Hope, this isn't to vilify Saint Hope in any way, shape, or form. It's for us to, as a board, move forward and say, this is what healthy oversight looks like. So those are my closing comments for this evening. I'm in full support of the recommendations that both Taylor Kayata and Ms. Tara Jean made this evening.
Thank you. Member Benjamin.
Thank you. So again, as Member Ibarra said, I'm not going to sit here and repeat everything. I think I'm in full agreeance with Member Kayata and Member Jean about this. So let me just give you a little backdrop about me. So I'm from 33rd and 9th Avenue. I graduated from Sacramento Public High School, right? And, you know, one of my main concerns is the verification of a process for teacher credentialing. What made my experience the greatest at Sacramento High School was Dennis Whelan, right? Ike Padgett, all these teachers who poured into us, who I knew had the credentialing. And, see, teaching's a calling, it's not a career. And so it's important that we have teachers that are going to be there to make sure that they see out a full four-year term from 9th to 12th grade. And that's what's important to me. That's my main issue. Let me tell you something, there's a difference between oversight and overreach. And we all took a vow to make sure that we're going to protect students. So if I do overreach, that's okay, because I can reach back. But I'm going to make sure that the oversight that we need is there. There's, you know, these situations where, you know, we see things and as a board, we have to address them, because we get the calls and things of that nature. And so with that said and done, like I said, I'm not going to repeat everything, but I am in, I'm in agreeance that I'm for the five-year plan.
Thank you, Member Benjamin. Any other comments, questions? I just want to get some clarity. Member Kayata, you mentioned a couple of things in here, so I think the question really is, the versions are actually, none of these versions that have been presented to us would encompass what? Seems like there's some edits and conversations that we want to have, so the question is, do you want to have those edits and conversations here, or are we bringing this back? I'm trying to get clarity on that. Member Jean, go ahead.
Can we, can Leslie say one thing on that?
So we have a couple of options on that. So we can either make the changes on the fly that are consistent with Member Kayata's request, as he stated earlier, or there can be direction provided for staff to make those edits and to bring them back to the board in August. While certainly there can be a delegation of authority to Superintendent Allen to sign off on those things, there would still need to be a ratification of that agreement in the final form.
With that, I'm actually interested in moving. Member Kayata, do you feel that without your edits, we're holding it up? Or can we vote to ratify the second one, knowing that there may be continued work and conversations on both sides about smaller edits, but that in general, like I'm essentially going to move the version B that is in front of us and not get into the weeds of editing? Because I feel like, as is, it's addressing the majority of our concerns and needs, and I would like to ratify it today and honor our commitment to June 30th for an MOU. That is an official motion, if you need me to make it a motion. And if you don't want me to, I won't yet.
Thank you. I just see Member Rhodes has a comment, so I want to, I know he hasn't spoken, so go ahead.
Yeah, I heard everybody, everyone's comments. And I think that with, I'm okay with going B, but with Taylor's express edits, I think that those are fair and can still move us forward today. So that's my two cents.
All right.
Could I also make one more comment? If you would like to take a short recess so that we could revise the language, we could certainly do that, and then bring it back and read it back into the record, and then we would essentially make the changes in our Word document, and that would be the version that the board will be approving this evening.
I guess that would, my next, sorry, I didn't wait for you to call me. That would also, my question would be, what about the proposed edits that were handed to us? Do we need to talk about those at all? Or is that in version A, so it's an issue?
Neither, neither, sorry, I'm pulling them up because I have a picture of them on my phone, I'm not texting.
There's extra copies right here.
You can grab one.
Ah, thank you.
And I should clarify, it said board approving, I meant board voting on.
Yes, thank you.
So neither of these edits are included in the drafts in front of you. Frankly, I think Leslie and I are in agreement, we are not in support of these edits.
Okay.
We are, edit number one, frankly, we're a little bit confused by. We understand that we, as in SAC City, have a responsibility and authority to direct Saint Hope Public Schools, and we don't really have authority to direct Saint Hope Academy. We can direct Saint Hope Public Schools from how they interact with those. So that change frankly confuses us, and we don't feel very comfortable with it. And, you know, while certainly, the, I understand the idea of edit two being to prevent overreach, but frankly, I think we've been very reasonable, and I think that the bare minimum of legal standard is clearly not working, as I receive a lot of complaints, and so I think we need to offer some additional resources there.
And for full disclosure, I did speak with the Charter Schools Legal Counsel today regarding that specific provision, dealing with the proposed strikeout of district standards, because I think there was a concern that that is a nebulous concept. However, what I made clear is that, again, the district is not going to impose standards on a charter school that it would not otherwise expect to fulfill on its own, right?
Yes.
So there is that standard of reasonableness, and that would be something that we would certainly work with the Charter School on as part of oversight and trying to hammer out what those investigative procedures and policies look like. It would not be done in a vacuum, but again, with this, in the spirit of reasonableness and working fairly and in good faith with Saint Hope. So with that understanding, I think that that language around district standards was far more palatable. At least, I can't speak for the Charter School, I'm certainly not their counsel, but just in my communications with their legal.
Thank you.
All right. So I have Member Navarro, then Member Kayata, and then I will speak at some point.
Yeah, so I was just going to, I had questions on these, but you guys answer them. The other thing, I was, actually, one of the amendments that I think Member Kayata mentioned, so I am in agreement with the removal of Cassandra Jennings from that, with the actual attorney, I'm not 100% sure on. So I'm not sure if there would have to be a motion there to handle, to keep the attorney name there, because otherwise, it's a useless clause, right?
You're talking about C3?
I believe so.
C1 and 3.
Yeah, so I agree with, I agree with C1, 28C1, C3. I mean, it's only a clause about that particular attorney, so I forgot the history of why that was included. But I feel that if we're going to remove the name, then that clause is not needed. So I believe that there was a really strong reason, I just don't remember for having that name there.
All right. Do you want to speak?
Sorry.
It's all good. I am going to, I just want to say a couple of things, and I'm going to suggest we go to recess real quick, so we can see if we can hash this out. I want to address the fact that we have folks here who are here to talk about the value that they feel with the Charter School, with Saint Hope. And I also want to say that we also want to make sure our students are cared for and educated in this district, especially with our oversight. I think this is, for me, I'm not, I'm here, not here because of the articles, I'm here because we have a process that we have to do, and that process has been in place since that conversation in September happened. Of course, there's information that comes out throughout the year, that's perfectly fine. I think they can put a highlight on something, but regardless of which decision we're going with, the point is to work together, to come up with a plan, to move forward, to see if we can find a way to make sure our kids are taken care of, whether they're at Saint Hope or whether they're part of the district regularly, Charter School or not. We have, we have something that we have to do here. And I will say, of course, I think the information from the Highland, the Highland Charter issue is, should be worrisome for everyone, not just for us as a board, for any community member, that any organization may hijack funds and use funds in a way that actually negatively, completely negatively impacts our students. So I think it's in the best interest of us to recess, to have a conversation, and make sure we come back, hopefully, with some language that puts us on that same trajectory that was already there, which I think is, the majority of the board seems to be saying, five years. But let's take a recess real quick and do that. I don't even know how we do that, I'm just going to hit the gavel and say we're taking a recess. And we're going to take a recess, is that cool, Lynn? All right. All right, folks. Thank you for your patience. I will let Amanda continue.
So President Singh and Board, we have received Member Kayata's edits, and Council is going to read them into the record, and then you all will be able to make a motion to approve. We're making the edits to version B, so you all would be in a place to make a motion to approve version B with the recommended edits as read into the record by legal counsel, which she is going to do right now.
Thank you. Okay, so Section 28, Subdivision A, little i, there's just a clerical change, which is going to be the separation of that paragraph, I believe, beginning with engagement. Is that correct? So we'll go ahead and make that change. And then Section 28, Subdivision C, little i, is going to be replaced in its entirety with the following. "The management of Saint Hope Public Schools shall rest solely with Saint Hope Public Schools under the oversight and supervision of Saint Hope Public Schools Board, and all consultants, advisors, agents, and vendors will be under the supervision and control of Saint Hope Public Schools employees and the Saint Hope Public Schools Board. No consultant, advisor, agent, or vendor may approve the expenditure of charter school funds or contracts on behalf of Saint Hope Public Schools, nor supervise their own performance or the performance of any entity contracted with Saint Hope Public Schools. No consultant, advisor, agent, or vendor or employee of any of the foregoing may exercise the non-delegable authority vested in the chief executive of Saint Hope Public Schools or its board. However, consultants, advisors, agents, or vendors may provide support and advice to Saint Hope Public School employees and the performance of their duties." And then finally, Section 29, Subdivision A. Do I have that right? Hold on. Oh, it's because I'm on the wrong page. Here we go. Sorry about that. Okay. "Is going to have a slight modification, but I'm going to read it for the record to ensure continuity and clarity. All of the Charter Schools' written complaint and investigation policies and procedures for district review and verification that they meet applicable legal and district standards and are being implemented with fidelity." That doesn't, is that a complete? That's not a complete sentence. Submitted for district. Submitted, it should say, okay, I'm going to state this over again. And I'm reading it as it's written. "All of the Charter Schools' written complaint and investigation policies and procedures submitted for district review and verification shall meet applicable legal and district standards and shall be implemented with fidelity. Should the district identify any deficiencies or shortfalls, the Charter School shall be required to update its policies and/or procedures in consultation with district recommendations." Okay, and that concludes the proposed revisions to version B of the MOU.
Thank you. Tara, would you like to modify your motion, or would you like me to move it?
I'll go for it.
Okay, I will move to approve option B as amended verbally by Council.
Okay. No, that's good, I'll second it.
All right. We will move on to a vote, and we will start with our student preferential vote.
Aye.
Member Jean?
Aye.
Member Kayata?
Aye.
Member Benjamin?
Aye.
Member Navarro?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Ibarra?
Aye.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I just wanted to say hi, I think I'm allowed to, to the interim Superintendent of July 1st. I can hear your heart and your passion, and I'm impressed that you're willing to step up into this, and I look forward to working with you to see your dreams and hope come to fruition as we figure out our partnership together.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item 11.1, Public Hearing for SCUSD's Subpo Local Plan for Contracts Annual Budget Plan, Annual Service Plan. Oh, actually, that has been removed, so I just read it for no reason. So we're moving on to 11.2. I was actually doing it, so you all know what we're removing. Just making sure. 11.2, Public Hearing and Approval of Resolution 3501 to Convey Utility Easements to SMUD for Pacific Elementary.
Good evening, Board President Singh, Board Members, Superintendent Allen. I'm Nathaniel Browning. I am here to ask the Board to open up a public hearing for public utility easements needed for the Pacific Elementary construction. I'm asking that we have a public hearing open up after that. I ask the Board to approve the resolution.
Do you have any public comment?
We do not.
Wonderful. Okay, well, the public hearing is now closed. Do we have any board discussion? I'll move. Do we have a second? All right, let's go to a roll call vote. We'll start with student preferential vote.
Aye.
Member Jean?
Aye.
Member Benjamin?
Aye.
Member Navarro?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Ibarra?
Aye.
Thank you so much. 11.3, Public Hearing and Approval Resolution 3503 for Government Code 4217 for JFK High Schools Parking Lot Solar Installation Project. Lot of words.
I'm getting mad today. All right. So, good evening, President Singh, Members of the Board, and Superintendent Allen. I'm Matt Jucknowitz, the Director of Facilities Design and Construction. Tonight, I'm presenting the John F. Kennedy High School Parking Lot Solar Project. After the public hearing, I'll be requesting approval through a vote to proceed under Government Code 4217, and in tandem, approval to award the contract. This project reflects our core values and our commitment to equity by reducing energy costs and reinventing, or reinvesting that, those costs into our schools. We're proposing the installation of over 1 megawatt of solar through carport canopies at John F. Kennedy's main parking lot. The system will include 23 EV chargers and offset approximately 80% of the school's energy use. Construction is anticipated for summer of 2026, minimizing classroom disruption and improving campus infrastructure. We're utilizing Government Code 4217 to streamline the process as an energy services contract. A public hearing notice was posted in accordance with the code, and tonight's meeting serves as a formal hearing required to proceed. A financial analysis has been prepared and provided to the Board. These are the highlights that confirm the project will generate sufficient energy savings at a conservative 2.5% energy escalation rate to justify the investment that will help save general fund dollars for years to come. Please note that the investment tax credit is a large sum paid directly from the federal government. This is an estimated amount and currently in flux at the federal level. The savings do not hinge on this, it is an added benefit to the project, increasing the savings exponentially. Estimated savings to the general fund totaled to nine and a quarter million dollars over the life of the system, and this translates into avoided cost escalations to the general fund annually in hundreds of thousands of dollars. Tonight, we ask the Board to adopt Resolution 3503 authorizing the energy service project under Government Code 4217.12, and awarding the contract a forefront power. Your approval enables us to move forward with final design and planning. This concludes the staff presentation. We're now available for Board questions or comments before you consider action on the resolution.
Thank you, Matt. We will go to- We will go to public comment first. Do you have any public comment?
No.
Member Jean.
Just a quick question. Can you briefly tell us the process of why Forefront Power won the contract? Just like, what did we go through to make that decision?
Yeah, so in 4217, it enables sole source contract based on an analysis and then presentation of the finding that will save money over the lifespan of the equipment.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, perfect. Forgot to say, public hearing is now closed. With that, I will see if there is a motion.
Motion. Second.
All right, motion by Member Ibarra, second by Member Jean. Let's go to a vote, so we'll start with our student preferential vote.
Aye.
Member Jean.
Aye.
Member Kayata.
I am very much looking forward to this. Aye.
Member Benjamin.
Aye.
Member Navarro.
Aye.
Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Singh.
Aye.
Member Ibarra.
Aye.
All right, 11.4, same thing but for Luther Burbank.
Yep, here I am again. So now I'm presenting the Luther Burbank High School Parking Lot Solar Project, and after this public hearing, I'll be requesting approval through a vote to proceed under Government Code 4217 and in tandem, approval to award the contract. This project reflects our core values and our commitment to equity by reducing energy costs and reinvesting those dollars in our schools. We're proposing the installation of nearly one megawatt of solar through carport canopies at Luther Burbank's main parking lot. This system will include 14 EV chargers and offset approximately 80% of the school's energy use. Construction is anticipated for the summer of 2026, minimizing classroom disruption and improving campus infrastructure. We're utilizing Government Code 4217 to streamline the process as an energy services contract. A public hearing notice was posted in accordance with the code, and tonight's meeting serves as that formal public hearing required to proceed. A financial analysis has been prepared and provided to the Board. These are the highlights that confirm the project will generate sufficient energy savings at a conservative 2.5% energy escalation rate to justify the investment that will help save general fund dollars for years to come. Please note that the investment tax credit is a large sum paid directly from the federal government, and this is an estimated amount and currently in flux, again, at the federal level. Savings does not hinge on this. It is an added benefit to the project, increasing savings exponentially. Estimated savings to the general fund totaled just over $7 million over the life of the system. This translates into avoided cost escalations to the general fund annually in hundreds of thousands of dollars as displayed. Tonight, we ask the Board to adopt resolution 3504 authorizing the energy service project under Government Code 4217.12 and awarding the contract to Site Logic Inc. Your approval enables us to move forward with final design and planning. This concludes the staff presentations, and I'm now available for any Board questions or comments before you consider action on the resolution.
Do you have any public comment?
We do not.
All right. Member Jean, is there?
No, you didn't turn it off.
Okay, my bad. Member Benjamin.
Yes, I have a question that might seem, just for both projects. So, the public will be able to use these, correct?
The EV chargers?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and then I guess they'll be charged, whatever it is. I'm kind of not good on the EV chargers.
Yes, the way we have it set up is they're charged essentially the rate that we pay for utilities.
Got you. And then where does that money go? Where? Ooh, good question.
I'd have to come back with that, exactly to where that money goes to directly. I'm sure it goes to refund our utilities.
Got you.
I can get clarification on that.
Thank you.
Member Rhodes.
Yes, this is very exciting for Kennedy and Burbank, but right there on Florin Road to have additional EV chargers is huge in the South area. I've driven around in electric vehicle, and you cannot find a good charging station in the corridor around, and so to have it at our school sites is just another way that we're benefiting our general population as we continue to do so. So you guys are doing a bang-up job. We appreciate it, especially on the South side, and I will move this. Look for a second.
Second.
Who wants it?
You can have it.
All right, Member Navarro.
April and I got the last one.
All right, we'll start with the student preferential vote.
Aye.
Member Ibarra.
Yes. He liked it. Throw me out.
Member Singh.
Yes.
Member Rhodes.
Yeah.
Member Navarro.
Aye.
Member Benjamin.
Aye.
Member Kayata.
Aye.
Member Jean.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It is important to clap. Thank you.
Yes.
All right, 12.1, 2025-26 LCAP and California Dashboard Local Indicators. Hello?
Good evening, Board members, President Singh, Superintendent Allen. Tonight, I'm here to facilitate the approval of the Local Control and Accountability Plan, commonly referred to as the LCAP, and the California School Dashboard Local Indicators, which are required to be submitted to the California Department of Education. The public hearing of the 2025-26 LCAP was previously held on June 5th, and tonight we are here to seek your adoption of that plan. There you go. To help us navigate this presentation and approval of the plan, I thought it'd be helpful to provide us a brief overview of this very brief presentation. As I referenced on the previous slide, we held our public hearing on June 5th, 2025. Additionally, we continue to be in contact with the Sacramento County Office of Education regarding our LCAP in advance, their review of the plans once it is adopted by our Board of Education. Finally, this presentation serves as notification to the Board of our submission of the district's local indicators for the California School Dashboard that will be included on the 2025 California Dashboard scheduled to be released in November 2025. Annually, the district is required by the California Department of Education to submit its local indicators for use in the California Dashboard released in the fall. After the CDE opened up the California School Dashboard, which had opened on June 2nd, we completed the required sections with the collaborative leadership of our college and career readiness, state and federal, family and community empowerment, and parent, teacher, home visit project offices. Completion of the required sections resulted in the requirements being met with regards to the local indicators, and a copy of the local indicators are included in your Board Finally, annually, the Board is required to review and approve the Local Control Accountability Plan Federal Addendum. This is an essential step in ensuring that we provide effective support for our students. That particular addendum will be coming back to the Board, actually coming to the Board for approval early in 2025-26. We just want to make you aware of that particular requirement as well. And thank you for the opportunity to share this very high-level plan. Again, you did see the actual plan in the June 5th public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do you have any public comment?
We have one, Mr. Terrence Gladney.
Good evening. I believe Board Member Jean received our LCAP PAC questions and comments to the Superintendent, so we'll be awaiting response on those as is statutorily required. And obviously, I'm the only member of my committee here, but at the last meeting, our member, Jeanette Cruz, presented some of our challenges as well as our celebrations and milestones from this year, but a lot of them were around process and the inclusion, bless you, and the inclusion of our committee members in decision-making. And it's interesting that tonight, we heard for the first time that there's, I guess, a policy committee conversation around limiting community access to different or multiple committees, which is interesting because I serve, I'm one of the few people that I know that serve on multiple committees, including LCAP PAC and the Community Schools Advisor Committee, and both have had limited attendance from our Board members. But also, the LCAP PAC has historically been underrepresented in terms of appointed members. So I kind of find, I was texting other of my PAC members, and they said, well, what would that mean for someone like you and Frank? Again, we both serve in multiple spaces. That means that the LCAP PAC will be operating without a quorum. So it just, again, seems a little out of turn that those conversations are happening, apparently, in silo without the inclusion of committee members, especially when we don't have access to our appointed Board liaisons in our spaces to have conversations or even to have firsthand knowledge about what that experience looks like. I would, you know, I would love to have a multitude of people step up and fill these positions so that I could be available in other spaces, but, you know, I don't do it for any glory or anything else. I do it because it's necessary. So to sort of look at that as like a solution to a problem about increased representation, again, seems to be misplaced and misguided, and that could be a conversation that could happen, actually, if you guys attended our meeting, so thank you.
Thank you. Have any Board discussion around this?
Are we just approving this? I mean, are we voting to approve this?
This is an action item, I believe, yes. Member Jean.
I just wanted to say congratulations. You guys have done some really good work and had some really deep conversations, and I'm just excited to see our three district-wide goals. I still appreciate the simplicity and the specificity of them and them being as solid as they are. I also just wanted to let you know that at the CSBA Delegate Assembly, I was on a committee where we were discussing our LCAPs and talking about how are we finding ways to discuss the things that we care about most with our kiddos and not just get locked into, like, the dashboard? And they all were very impressed when I shared that we focus on growth, not specific achievement, but are we seeing growth every single year? They also really loved that we had a goal around inclusion and welcome and safety by our school climate and culture surveys. And so I just wanted to say that SCUSD got shout-outs by CSBA from the work that we're doing and the ground that we're breaking to have the deep conversations we have. So I just wanted to say thank you and give you a shout-out, and I look forward to seeing the work we continue to do and the successes we start seeing over the years because of this work.
Great teamwork. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Kayata.
So I wanted to kind of follow up on Terrence's comments a little bit and to remind us of the comments that we got from the LCAP PAC, I think it was last meeting, by my two appointees, I have obviously read the LCAP. I do agree with it, and I think there's great work here, but I do remain a little bit concerned that I'm not fully confident that the voice of our PAC is being reflected fully. And the reason that's important is because, yes, we have to have the PAC, but it's more than that, is because we have a PAC, we rely on them to make sure that the vision that we're hearing as elected Board members translates to paper in a way that sometimes doesn't permeate the walls of center-to-center. So I just, this one, I'm fully in support of. I just want to kind of make sure, we need to, I think, increase the PAC's role in ensuring that, I don't want to misquote them here, but I guess I would summarize it as they don't feel fully engaged in developing the LCAP. They're kind of given a sneak peek into it and provide some general feedback, but in my opinion, I just want to make sure we're fully engaging with them, because if we're not going to do that, then I think in the future, this Board will have to take a lot more active role in the LCAP, because we've essentially delegated it either to staff, and again, I'm saying it's great work, or to our PAC. But with that, I did find this one to be in line with our goals, and the Board's goals at some point will be coming out. We are working on adopting those, and I will say these are in line with discussions we've had, but I just want to make sure that we're more intentional about making sure that's the case, that we don't just all happen to agree with each other. But thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. Member Ibarra.
So I was actually going to say what you just ended saying, that it does reflect a lot of the conversation we had coming together as a Board and just trying to figure out what our goals are moving forward. But my comments are more for you this evening. First of all, thank you for all of this work, because I know that this work isn't easy. The LCAP is such a complex thing to be working on. My comments are more that I want to be, I want to work with you more throughout this next school year, especially as we're going into the new school year, because a lot of the things that I have on my mind are around how we're going to integrate some of these things, like our community schools, to our LCAP so that once we no longer have those grant fundings, we don't find ourselves back where we were, like, in the Esser situation, right? And so how do we have those conversations now so that we are integrating the voices of the community, so that when we do get to that place, we know that we're in a place where we are creating the space for the voice, but that we're also applying it? And so I think that's a lot of work for us to just depend on you to do, and so I would love to begin those conversations once we get into the beginning of the school year and look at who we need to bring in from other committees or departments so that we can make sure that it's fruitful and that we're able to push this forward with an equity lens on really hearing voice specifically around, and I want to be very intentional about this, because I think that as a Board, we've been called out about it, and I want to be intentional around hearing the voice of our Black students. So, whatever that looks like, we don't know yet, but we can start those conversations, and I just want you to know that I'm here to be your partner in this, and I look forward to the work.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, with that, I'll look for a motion, if there is one.
I will motion.
All right, Member Ibarra, is there a second?
I'll second.
Member Kayata with the second. We'll start with the student preferential vote.
Aye.
Member Ibarra.
Aye.
Member Singh.
Aye.
Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Navarro.
Aye.
Member Benjamin.
Aye.
Member Kayata.
Aye.
Member Jean.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item 12.2, adopting the dependent charter 25-26 LCAP plan.
All right, good evening again, folks, trustees, Superintendent Allen, and SCUSD community. I am here to present the locally funded dependent charter school 2025 Local Control Accountability Plans for adoption. The California Department of Education requires that all local education agencies complete and approve a local control accountability plan. As independent LEAs, Bowling Green Elementary, George Washington Carver School of Arts and Sciences, New Joseph Bonheim Community Charter, Sacramento New Technology Early College High School, and the Met must complete their own LCAPs. The SCUSD Board is the governing board of these LEAs and must approve those LCAPs. These LCAPs were developed over the course of the 23-24 school year and adopted by this Board last June. They have been updated to reflect progress made over the first year of the three-year cycle. At our last Board meeting, the documents included in the Board Packet were still in draft form. Since then, they have been finalized and recommended for approval by their local steering committees in additional public meetings. The Board Packet contains links to the LCAP, local indicators, budget overview for parents, and steering committee agendas at which they were recommended for approval for each of the five charter schools. Once they have been approved, these documents will be submitted to CDE, SCOE, and posted on the school's websites as required. That is all.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Board discussion. Do we have any Board discussion? Member Ibarra.
I just want to extend the same support. I know that I have my Bowling Greens and New Joseph Bonheim, and there's one more. But as well, let's stay connected so that we can push forward and I can make sure that I'm being supportive in the process.
All right, thank you. Well, with that, is that a motion?
It's a motion.
All right. Do you have a second?
Motion.
Is that your second?
Yeah. Yeah, that was a second.
That sounded like a second. Student preferential vote.
Aye.
Member Jean.
Aye.
Member Kayata.
Aye.
Member Benjamin.
Aye.
Member Navarro.
Aye.
Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Singh.
Aye.
Member Ibarra.
Aye.
Thank you.
You ready, Katsui? You ready?
Thank you so much. All right, item 12.3, adopting the fiscal year 25-26 proposed budget for all funds.
Good evening, President Singh, Board members, Superintendent Allen, and members of the community. I'm Cindy Tao, Assistant Superintendent of Business Services. This is item 12.3, the proposed 25-26 budget, which is presented to you this evening for adoption. As you recall, at the June 5th meeting, we provided a presentation and held a public hearing. As a recap of the presentation... As a recap of the presentation, the report reflects the most recent updates from 25-26 Governors May revise and includes detailed budget assumptions, 24-25 estimated actuals, and a multi-year look to support the board's understanding of our current and future financial position for all funds. As always, our budget reflects the district's core values, equity, access, and opportunity. We recognize that school funding in California is equitable, inequitable, and we're committed to making budget decisions that help all students and have more opportunities after graduation. Here's a list of helpful acronyms for anyone who may not be familiar. Here's an overview of the agenda items ahead. This is our general fund multi-year projection for the next three fiscal years. As you focus on the bottom line, the district remains fiscal solvent through 26-27. However, expenditures are projected to exceed revenues in 27-28. The early forecast highlights the need for proactive budget planning to preserve core programs and ensure long-term fiscal stability. Now let's take a closer look at the numbers in the combined multi-year ending fund balance. In 25-26, the district projects $692.6 million in revenues and $791 in expenditures, resulting in unassigned fund balance of $8.1 million. In 26-27, the balance drops significantly to $327,000, and by 27-28, it declines further to a negative $12.7 million, which puts the district below the state 2% reserve requirement. The decline is largely driven by falling enrollment, the expiration of one-time funds, and expenditures that continues to exceed ongoing revenues. These trends highlight the urgent need for tighter spending controls and long-term budget planning to maintain fiscal stability. In summary, the district remains committed to strong financial stewardship as we navigate key challenges. While we are meeting our obligation for 25-26, projections for the following years show growing structural deficit and a negative unrestricted fund balance in 27-28. We continue to meet the state-required 2% reserve through 26-27. However, 27-28, the district is projected to fall below the reserve requirement and enter a deficit position. This reinforces the urgency of our right sizing plan, which reflects renewed commitment to fiscal responsibility, shared accountability, and student-centered priorities. Rather than taking a one-size-fits-all approach, the efforts call on each department and school site to identify what is important and ensure resources are aligned with what matters the most, our students. As highlighted on Slide 2, our guiding principle drives us to create pathways that allow students to graduate with the greatest number of post-secondary choices and the widest range of opportunities. To achieve this, we must integrate our Local Control and Accountability Plan, also known as LCAP, school plan for student achievement, SIPSa, and budget decisions in a cohesive and intentional way. This alignment is important to advancing our theory of change and ensuring that every dollar supports meaningful, equitable outcomes for students. Before I close, I want to take a moment to genuinely thank you, the many individuals who pour their time, energy, and expertise into the year's budget development process. Since November 2024, the work has been non-stop. What we've built took teamwork, late nights, and shared commitment. I'm truly grateful to have an amazing business services team right behind me. Furthermore, a special thank you goes to our Chief Business Operations Officer, Janay Markin, who attended over 80 budget development in person, not teams meeting, but in person. She was not there just to observe, but to fully engage, listen, and help guide the work from start to finish. Her partnership along with the contribution of our incredible business services team, district chiefs, assistant superintendents, department and school administrators, analysts, specialists, superintendent, and administrative support staff brought this budget proposal to life. Balancing the budget is not solely the responsibility of business services. The phrase "it takes a village" doesn't even begin to capture the level of collaboration required. It takes all of us, across departments, across school sites, everyone in this room, working together to ensure that our available resources are focused where they matter the most, on student success. That concludes the presentation. At this time, staff recommends approval of the proposed action as presented. Adopt the proposed 25-26 budget. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any question you may have.
Thank you so much, Cindy. Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
All right, board discussion? Great job, thank you. So I'm going to move and see if there's a motion. Okay, there's a second by Member Navarro. Let's go to our vote. We'll start with student preferential.
Aye.
Member Jean?
Aye.
Member Kayata?
Aye.
Member Benjamin?
Aye.
Member Navarro?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Ibarra?
Thank you all for all of your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item 12.4, approving the submission of a credential waivers application to the California Commission on Teacher Credentialing.
Hi. Let's see. Okay, good evening, President Singh, Board Members, and Superintendent Allen. My name is Christina Penya, and I'm here tonight to present credential waiver applications and request for your approval. I'm here this evening because ed code provides an opportunity for districts to waive portions of credential requirements in order to give educators a little more time to complete their credential requirements. In order to submit credential waiver applications for certificated employees in need, the CCTC, which is the California Commission on Teacher Credentialing, requires a public notice to process along with board approval prior to submission of any waiver applications. Presented here are the data trends for the credential waiver requests for the past few years. We remain committed to working collaboratively with our employees to ensure they meet their credentialing requirements. The applicants listed are actively working toward, working to fulfill their CCTC requirements to obtain English learners' authorizations for instructing English learners. And... It's okay. The waivers requested this evening will grant the teachers the additional time to complete their English language authorization while continuing to work with their students.
Thank you so much. Do you have any public comment?
No, no public comment.
Thank you. Any board discussion or questions? Member Jean?
So I just wanted to clarify, we've got four teachers that are requesting this this time?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And I just, we have how many teachers approximately in the district?
Two thousand some. We actually had one ROTC teacher and then two CTE teachers that were fully credentialed this year.
Excellent.
So they were taken off the list of waiver requirements. And then we have one new employee that's an ROTC, so he was added on, but...
No, I just wanted to ridiculously emphasize how much we make sure we hire highly qualified folks, and then I wanted to emphasize that it is very amazing that we are working with CTE folks. Quite often, these folks are coming into with incredible industry experience, but that doesn't line up with the education way, and so working with them to not only make sure that they are qualified, but then compensated with those years of experience and whatnot is just, it's a process of all of it. So, and then the SEDI thing, I remember some odd years ago when we had to all go through that to make sure we were ready and prepared to work with our English learners. So I just wanted to say I fully support this and point out how important it is that we work with folks that want to be in our education systems, make sure they're ready to do it.
Thank you, and with that, are you moving?
I'll move it.
Do you have a second? Second by Member Ibarra, we'll go to student preferential vote.
Aye.
Member Jean?
Aye.
Member Kayata?
Aye.
Member Benjamin?
Aye.
Member Navarro?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Ibarra?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Aye, sorry.
Missed it, it's done. All right, well, with that, we'll see you all in August, August 7th and then September 4th, and do we have a motion to adjourn?
No, we're not adjourning.
No.
We'll have to go back up.
Motion to go back up, and then we'll adjourn later. We have a motion to go back upstairs?
Motion to go back to closed session.
Want to go home? All right, back to closed session? Who's motioning that?
I motion it.
Yes, all in favor?
All in favor? Aye, aye.
Aye.